Locate future business. And the citizens are competing globally, competing with that neighbor, Mexico. The tax company has a facility already located in Mexico. Absolutely just as easy for them to build there as would be for them to build here. So they include this as part of their formulation to decide where do we spend. And our mental goal is to try to get them to expand as much as possible in Greensburg location and just for definitely to help make that decision easier for them.
You're looking to expand this west of the current facility?
Yes.
And there are, there is no doubt that there will be future expansion.
None either. Yes, there's definitely a possibility of extending more so this new building or to add it for.
I'm very appreciative of the explanation and the consideration given with regard to the personal property as far as life expectancy. That's pretty important in terms of the ten year piece. And from my perspective, and I have no hesitation to do that, given the length of the life expectancy of these pieces, or where these pieces are. I think we've had passed a guideline that personal property was shorter, or often because it had a shorter life. But we're looking at things here in like similar to quite as long as the building, but a very, we're looking twenty-five plus, and you're looking at a long life, some buildings that is so. I'm grateful that you did include that because I think that's really an important aspect of being able to say yes. I'm very happy to hear the good news that you're expanding frankly, and adding about fifty jobs. That's, that's good news.
Absolutely.
Great with jobs. There are a few more that are there. Time you count for temps?
Yes, if you include the temp, I believe it's maybe sixty, sixty-three additional temporary jobs as well as the forty-nine full-time jobs.
Don't you pay them the same hourly rate?
The hourly rate is very close to the same for most of those positions. However, they do not receive the benefits.
Those are like work all the time.
So they work full-time, but they're hired to a temporary agency located here in Greensburg.
If this, and I have no reason, it would prove successful, benefits successful. Is there any, any way of looking at that in terms of moving some of those temp jobs and even some of the temps you have now into full-time positions? Is that ever a consideration?
It's, it can be a consideration. Of course, you know, the goal is we must stay competitive.
Right.
Probably what impacts that more than anything is the job market. And we're running into that a little bit now. It just depends on supply and demand. You know, we cannot, we cannot hit, be hit with a high turnover. Okay? Usually in temporary positions, if the employment's good, you're going to have a very high turnover. And in some cases, we're starting to experience that now. So it depends on the position, but if we run into a situation where the turnover is fairly high in temporary positions, then it becomes as costly or more costly than it would be to have the full-time position. So each budget period, we evaluate that. And if it seems like it's more cost-effective and feasible, then we will add more positions. Now, to kind of complement that, we just finished the budget for the next budget period, and we have already decided to go from one forty-seven to one sixty-two full-time positions because of the fact that we're getting, we're starting to feel the impact by the job market and the supply of jobs becoming more available. And so that's impacting our turnover in areas that we can't afford to have with turnover. So we have already started in that direction. Now, will it continue? I can't say, but to answer your question, there's a possibility.
No, I'll ask you a question that I already answered too, but you try to hire from within your temporary pool until if at all possible.
Yes.
People that are for a while, they're trained, they have good work habits, and that is.
Just kind of to answer your question, we have what we call contingent temporary pools. And we hire them at the starting weight of a full-time employee. We train them the same as a full-time employee. We provide them uniforms. And we also mark the date that they're hired as their seniority date. So if they stay with the company, say that they stay in contention for a year, once they're hired by time, their seniority starts, vacation, and so forth on the date of their hire as contingent. So we try to create as many incentives as possible for them to stay on board until we can find an opening for them. And of course, the better performer they are, the better chances they have. But we're trying to provide those type of incentives so they will stay on board until we do find openings in full-time positions. And in some cases, in a lot of other cases, they don't want to wait because longer they don't have to. So yes, to answer your question, that's our goal. We try to be as fair and consistent as possible. And it's working out for.
And the council's information that this, if the ten years is approved, personal property is not first time for the city. And it's been, it's been recently by the city. It's not a thing, it's not a priority.
Unless there's other questions, I'm ready to move.
I'm ready to move.
Okay, you want to do this on both real estate and personal property?
I think we do it separately.
Okay. Okay, they're both on the same resolution.
We do it all at the same time, I understand, but I don't care either way.
I don't think there's going to be, I don't know. I'm fine if we do them both again.
They are both on the same resolution.
All right, well then that's fine.
An attempt motion to approve the tax payment request for touchy for ten years on personal property in real estate.
I agree. Second.
Further discussion? And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hope same sign. That's, thank you.
Very much.
Okay, next piece, Patty from Southeastern Indiana Regional Planning Commission.
Could we clarify, could I?
Oh, correct them.
Greg?
Greg.
Yes. Just so they're here. Bridget, did you have a copy of the real estate, or the real, real estate improvements on hers, or with her package? And now you did aye. Could we just, just for clarification, record, show that we're approving the SB one with respect to the personal property and the SB one with respect to the real property?
Is that under, it should be under the res, Bridget, shouldn't it?
Usually it's kind of SB one for personal property and SB one for real estate usually. And I noticed there wasn't a number on the copy that's in yet, so I didn't, we have an issued.
We got two separate. Aren't there two separate, there are two separate?
You get two separate SB ones, Bridget, and I, and I. So just so we have clarification that, that there were two different SB ones.
It's okay.
It's more, it's really more for their benefit.
To make sure that they know that they're getting a vote.
Yeah, yeah, both of them. That is the motion.
They're only going to get the same.
On personal property and real estate. That they're both under the same resolution. That's been done before.
Okay, and that's fine. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Airplane's fine.
Hi, I'm Catty Jackson with the Southeastern Indiana Regional Planning Commission. And I just wanted to give you guys an update on the Decatur County, on our occupied rehab program. I came to you probably early spring, late winter, and asked for you to give us the match for the program. And I'm glad to come to you today and say that the grant has been funded for five hundred thousand dollars. We're going to be assisting twenty-five families in Decatur County, and none of those are within the city limits of Greensburg. I did bring a list of the participants for, that will be in the limits of Greensburg. If anybody would like a copy of that, I'd be glad to give it to you so that you can watch the progress as we get underway. And I want to thank you very much for your support for the program. Without you all doing that, I'm sure that it would have been more of a struggle for us to get funded. So it's been a great community effort. And just to give you an update on what's going on with it since it's been funded, we found out at the end of July, beginning of August, and we have really received the release of funds, so we can now incur costs. Ron Weston with Weston Home Inspections out of Greensburg here. And we signed a contract with him on Friday. He's going to be performing the home inspections for us. We'll be doing an advertisement to get our bidders list together. So anyone that knows any local contractors that would like to get on our bidders list when we're ready to bid out the construction work, please have them contact me, and I'll be glad to tell them what I need to get on that list. I'm trying to think what else we've done. Are scheduling the lead risk assessments, which I will be doing that. I'm a licensed lead risk assessor with the state of Indiana, so I will be going in all the homes and assessing what all we need to do there on health and safety issues. So I don't know if there's any questions from you all at all. I know the money that you guys committed, the six thousand dollars was, we originally requested eight, and we dropped it down to six. And we don't need that money just yet. It'd be when we bid out for construction and start drawing funds. We'll draw simultaneously from the state and the city and all that, and I'll be coordinating with Bridget and telling her where we need to draw funds from that. But I believe the funds has already been set aside, so other than that, I'm, thank you very much for your support. We really appreciate it. And I know the community does too, so there's a lot of need out there.
I appreciate it.
Do you guys have any questions at all? I did bring some cards with me. If you would like one, I'll give you one. If you have any questions as we go through the process, or if someone contacts you with any questions or concerns, please contact me. I don't like to have any issues, so. All right, so I'll grab those real quick.
Thanks.
Did anyone go and ask at the, or I could email them if you want.
Please, I don't have this, let me know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next time. Bridget. Bridget Savage. Oh, Melanie, oh, excuse me, excuse me. Melanie, how could I miss you?
I'm available, I'll get you do that.
Please come forward.
Thank you guys. I'm here tonight with a request for your consideration. Jesse Wallace worked with the Cespa Centennial Committee in two thousand nine while he was a teacher at Greensburg Community High School. His responsibilities at that time were with GTV, and he had his own production company, Copy Pays Productions. And with Mr. Hutter's help, we made the connections with Jesse. And Jesse and his crew filmed the entire week of Cespa Centennial activities. Literally hundreds of hours of film are now sitting on his hard drive in Chicago because he has since moved. He contacted us seeking to place the footage with us so we could have access to it for anyone that would so desire to have a copy of it or to use it for any other purposes. And I believe the mayor correctly, if I'm wrong in this, but he wanted me to bring it here tonight to get the council's input on how they'd like us to proceed. The cost he gave us at the time was four hundred dollars. And that is literally because of all the hours of filming. We need a very large hard drive to get it on there. So we just would like to know how you'd like to proceed.
And when he did the filming, was there any charge to the city?
Um, he did charge some for time for some of the crew members that he had to pay to come and do it, but otherwise it was a lot less than what we've had to pay another crew.
And then he had sold some of the vehicles as well.
Exactly, exactly. And we are still getting requests for some of the footage from time to time. So that's where it is. But he would really like to move the footage off his hard drive. He's no longer teaching in Greensburg, he's living in Chicago, he's going to graduate school and doing other work, and he'd really like that footage to stay in Greensburg. So just your thoughts, how you'd like us to proceed?
It's obvious we need that for future use, that people like to have four hundred dollars, you know. But we'll do it, we filmed our, I mean, take the filming home as there is.
We would take the hard drive, yes, and then we would be able to utilize that as necessary.
Or someone else.
Do what, I'm sorry?
Who's going to have a drive?
That would be my other question, if you want to have it here, the library, the historical society, however you would like to look at that. That's who I was thinking of. By all your thoughts, I'm thinking, you think that might be a good idea?
I can get it someplace. I just want to make sure.
I have any reason to say, I mean, if it's, if it's been done and created, it seems silly to not.
Have controller wrote footage.
Somewhere, yeah.
Yeah. So.
Have you seen it or anything, Melanie?
I've seen the edited version, this would be the edited version, shall we say, and so we might have to re-decide if you want to screen and see for yourself.
Well, they used to run it on the GTV.
Yeah, they did, and that was an edited version of it. But this would be the raw footage, so this would be everything, so I, you know.
And I leave it there for, for thirty years, and now somebody starts like.
The part of the GTVs and stuff.
Yeah, well, and then if we need copies, if somebody's still looking for some footage, then we would have quicker access to it to maintain that, so.
Yeah, whatever kind of range would be on, makes the historical society have access to it. If they have some places to work. I don't, I don't know, I don't, there may be better places coming through.
And maybe so that you can talk with your webmaster too.
And we can talk about it later, but now we're handling future sales.
So, so I'll tell Jesse to go ahead and copy it, and then just get an invoice for you. Okay. Anything? Thank you.
Anything else, Melanie?
Aye.
Thank you, Melanie.
Okay, I think we're ready for a second reading on ordinance two thousand twelve dash nine, two thousand twelve dash ten, two thousand twelve dash eleven, and two thousand twelve dash fourteen. Actually, the first line after my name on the agenda really is what two thousand twelve dash fourteen is. It's salary and form, it's every, it's really the form one, so, so it's not just the salary ordinance. It's, the salary ordinance is a part of each one of the other three.
Yeah, the three, the other.
Yes.
It's really the budget.
Yes.
Or budget.
Does anybody have any questions? I did put an amended or an updated version of the general fund. Jamie, yours is already in your book, because you left me your book, so especially you got yours put in there already. And by, between, between Jamie's book and my book, I went back through and made sure that we both matched up on what we had discussed at the last budget workshop. And I think we're right now at a hundred and sixty-five thousand fifteen dollars in cuts just on those line items, not any additional amounts put back in by ordinance or anything like that, just in line items.
And really that, we'll finalize that next month.
Yes.
What we're doing tonight, separating which is what we originally had done.
Right, yeah, nothing's been changed.
That's all the same, and that's just kind of moving the process along.
This is just, that was just, what I gave you tonight is just a line item update, not a coordinate change.
Right. The money's we're putting back in, I think we exceeded what we were asked to cut.
Yeah, so we'd like, Bridget, is it some of those things, like, say, original hundred sixty-five thousand?
Yeah, a hundred and sixty-five thousand and fifteen dollars, according to what Jamie and my worksheets came up to. So if we, and like I said, I've got those in red, so if you see something that I've got, yeah, we'll have time to, you can let me know and make sure we're in good shape.
As far as tonight goes, in terms of this movement process, long even though I know it comes at, we've tried enough to do it three times, but keeping up tradition here, well, I would move passage on second reading. We do it all, you know, we do the individual.
We can go all.
We do all, I agree with that. I move passage on second reading to that ordinance two thousand twelve dash nine, two thousand twelve dash ten, two thousand twelve dash eleven, two thousand twelve dash fourteen.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hope same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, council. Okay, Mr. Mark Tompkins, you must be this evening. Bring up the date of what's going on with the EDC.
Sure. This is a very good evening to update you council folks on a lot of the exciting activities that are going on with the EDC now. The economic activity that's taking place in Greensburg, Decatur County. Of course, you just heard Itachi Powder Metals. I would just add one thing to that, that the state has worked with us very closely on that too, to provide incentives to assist with the expansion there. So we're ninety-nine and ninety-nine hundreds percent sure that that's what, that's happening. We have another expansion that we're working on details with the company right now. From our side of things, it, it looks very good. It, it's pretty much in the company's hands right now, whether or not they say yes, we're expecting a yes. I would give it a seventy-five percent chance of succeeding. And that is a, a large project, seventy million dollars in expansion with about fifty, fifty-five more additional jobs being added to Greensburg, Decatur County. We also have our Business Appreciation Day on the twenty-seventh of September. I hope you'll mark your calendars for that. You should be getting your invitation by the end of the week. We have a very good speaker this year at our early bird reception and dinner that will be starting at four, ending at six o'clock. That's Dan Hassler, who is Indiana Secretary of Commerce and CEO of the Indiana Economic Development Corporation, the recruitment arm of the Indiana government. We're also doing some land development north of the interstate, Interstate seventy-four, near the North Exchange, close to Honda. With one of the families just coming with us and help, and doing an option on that, we would have about three hundred acres. There are two other plots owned by families that would, that could total about five hundred acres for commercial and industrial development. They're on the north side of the interstate. And everyone that we've spoken with, including the state, says that would be an excellent location for a shovel-ready site. Shovel-ready sites get a lot more looks from state prospects than do just raw land or land that's partially developed. And we are looking to have that shovel-ready designation hopefully by about a year from now on those five hundred acres, if we're fortunate, and we keep our fingers crossed and be positive about that. We've had several, I think, successful marketing events recently. We were in Cincinnati for the marketing event to attract site consultants that would look at our community. We'll be doing the same thing in Chicago at the first, well, actually at the end of this week, we'll be doing that in Chicago. Interestingly, the company that was here is one of six Japanese affiliated companies in Greensburg and Decatur County, which include Honda, Steel Tech, G-Com, Indiana Assemblies, One Solution Logistics, and Nipro Glass, which some people are not even aware of, it's in Westport. That leads me to the final marketing effort that we'll have next month, that'd be when Mayor Herbert and I will go to Japan for about a week, and we will call on at least every company here that I just listed, the Japanese affiliated part. The appointments for those calls are going very well. And we're fortunate again to have the Secretary of Commerce, Dan Hassler, he'll be on that trip with us too. We already have two of those companies that he will be going with Mayor and myself to visit those companies and hope that we will secure future expansions in Greensburg. Finally, there was a very exciting visit this last week by an aluminum, this was last Friday, aluminum processing company that's headquartered in Ohio, another seventy million dollar capital investment potential with about seventy-seven jobs to be added in that. It's pretty, it's very equipment intensive. And they were looking at the Adams Rail Park right in back of Honda. They are auto industry related. They will be making a decision either by the end of the year, beginning of next year. We are narrowed down to two sites in Indiana that they're looking at. They're also looking at two other potential states. But the right to work, the legislation that was passed in Indiana, they tell us is very helpful to them in this process. So with them looking at other states in the Midwest, we hope that we'll be looked at more favorably because of that. I have.
I'll take any questions. If I have any questions.
Just hold a good news.
Right, Trump trying. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
One of the reasons that we are going is because of the very possible digital business existing companies here in Greensburg. And like or not, we're competing for jobs in Mexico. They already currently have plans in Mexico. So I have to speak with Mr. Hassler to gather all the facts and explain the negatives of being in Mexico and possibly competing in the United States of America. Complete our case, and consider us a positive parent. Also something that we're in the process of doing for the unemployed and the underemployed are certifications. Would you like to tell council about that?
In the area of workforce development, that was probably one of my passions that I had before I came up here, when I was working in economic development in Tennessee, is workforce development. And there's a certification out there right now, it's called MSSC, and we've talked with workforce one, the state is interested in it, Cummins is interested in, which is also funding, doing some refunding of the Echo fifteen project.
The Cummins is doing that.
Yes, that's correct. So we are doing our follow-up with them to try to get in on that beginning of helping those people that may need some more training, be they college, or high school graduates or people who are unemployed that might have been in manufacturing or could have been laid off from manufacturing. Unfortunately, we've lost some jobs there, and we're gaining some jobs back too. But they need some retraining. And this process would provide this certification, which is like a portable credential that they could take from one manufacturer to another, where they're looking for jobs, to say, I've had this kind of training in manufacturing, I've had this background in manufacturing, I'm interested in a, in a job here, and this is a part of, part of my resume. So we'll be telling you more about that soon, sooner than later.
And the reason being, suppose the labor pool they have sometime doesn't meet the criteria that the employers require.
You, there's an article that's very pertinent, if you look at Inside Indiana Business Today, it's saying, it's a perspective, it's an opinion, but they're saying a lot of the manufacturers, a lot of the studies that are being done are, are saying that they, they're, the manufacturers do not find enough trained people to meet their needs, meet their plans. So that's, that's critical. Some of the better jobs are obviously have been, and I think we're seeing a renaissance right now in manufacturing. I think we will. And the city and county are very well. And this city and county are very well positioned for that. So, we want to help see to it that there are trained people and that our manufacturers in this community are not honored for more trained folks, that could, that could help them fulfill their plans.
Thank you, Mark, I appreciate it. This wasn't expected, but Mark doesn't get to attend all our meetings, I see him there, and we'll take advantage of it.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Darrell, would you like to report on the Board of Works meeting we had?
Absolutely. Kind of a short agenda tonight. Landon Martin asked for road closings for the Fall Festival. This year, they're going to close all four sides of the square, at least that's a tentative plan. And also closing Broadway for the parade route, which will be the usual route. Leslie Thackeray asked for road closing for East North Street, portion of East North Street and North Broadway in front of the Gillenhead Funeral Home for the Health and Safety Fair for the children. This will be the last year at that location. Next year, they're going to the YMCA, they've outgrown that location. Scott Chastain asked Board of Works to approve a vehicle purchase. We rejected the bids, asking for one more bid because we only had two bids, so we expect that to be next meeting. Jess Smith talked to us about Task Order Number Five, which basically, we're hiring NT, HNTB. We're going to be using them for engineering help for the pretreatment of the water or the sewage. And then we also hired a green born adult for a legal counsel. They specialize in this particular area. Mark Coster came to met with us, asked us to sign a couple of change orders for the Gas Creek Project, and that's it.
Thank you, Darrell. Anything from the council, questions, comments?
I have one, Mark. One minute. I felt guilty sitting down just then, but I think Terry mentioned that there's a lot of good activity that's being talked about, and I just want to commend the city and the county, because I wouldn't be here giving all that, talking about all that good activity unless I was getting great support from the city and the county and the Economic Development Corporation Board. I just see a lot of really good cooperation in this community right now, and I've just been here sixteen months, so, I think it's really something to be proud of in the whole community.
We appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, Terry.
Mark, did you mention the Business Appreciation Day?
Yes. And they said they had it all circled on the calendar.
I bet they did. Is there anything from the audience?
I'll try not to take up a lot of your time this evening, it's getting late. This is in regards to the airport expansion, since this was the last day for public notification of those people to it, I thought that I'd give you a brief on a letter from the Tabor Law Office that he sent, it's 145 pages. We're not going to look at all 145 pages, but here's the letter. We won't go through all this either, as you see, it's pretty, pretty long. I'd more like to just a couple of things, sorry about that, sorry.
No problem.
I think we all know who you are, but. And then this mayor's copy of all the exhibits, we're not going to go through those either, but if you want them, there they are. Included with that too, you can get all this information at the greensburgairport.com website too, as I said, we won't go through all of it tonight, but there are a couple of things that I thought that should be brought to your attention that are included in this letter to them. Again, this is a letter written by the lawyer, Tabor Law Group out of California. Over the past many years, as this airport expansion's moved forward, there's been some question from time to time about who's responsible for the project. In light of that, I'd like to read our response to the draft environmental assessment that's been filed on behalf of the citizens, concerned citizens of Decatur County. Quote, "Item one, the sponsor listed and the draft EA does not comply with the terms of the grant assurances and therefore the draft EA is inadequate. The first issue with the draft EA arises on the first page of the draft EA. It seems that the Federal Aviation Administration and the engineering firm hired to develop the draft EA have been operating under the impression that the Greensburg Menusal Airport Board of Aviation Commissioners, BOAC, is the owner and operator of the airport. This is not the case. There's no record of either ownership or operatorship by the BOAC. Instead, it is the City of Greensburg that are the owners and operators of the airport. Anything that the BOAC does, it does on behalf of the City of Greensburg and not in its own name." Now, reduce some of this down so that we won't get into a lot of words here this evening, but since a large, there are ordinances that it references here, I'd like to point out a couple of those too. IC 822-2 specifically states that the board's powers and operators, operations will be on behalf of the eligible entity and not in its own name. Therefore, either the corporate warranty deed is void since BOAC cannot receive property in its own name, or the corporate warranty deed must be read to give title to the City of Greensburg and not to BOAC. And since a large portion of the project involves the forced acquisition of land, the FAA needs to be certain that the entity currently listed as the sponsor of the BOAC can deliver a good title. And since it does not have the power under the Indiana law to hold a title to an airport in its own name, the fact that it doesn't is probably a reason why it's not in compliance with Grant Assurance Number Four. Although they have the authority, the BOAC has the authority to apply for the AIP grants, it does not have the legal authority to finance the proposed project. Therefore, the draft EA is also in violation of another Grant Assurance Number Two. Thus, the draft EA is inadequate because it violates Grant Assurances Two and Four and has been performed in the name of an entity that cannot be the owner of the airport. Item B, this has to do with the eminent domain issue. Even if the BOAC does have a good title of the airport, it lacks the power of eminent domain to acquire the property proposed to be acquired by the project. Neither the BOAC nor the City of Greensburg has the power to acquire the property needed for the project through eminent domain. Thus, the draft EA is in violation of Grant Assurance Four."
Don, I hate to interrupt you, but you know, attorneys do what they do.
Yep.
And they'll, they'll work it out. I don't know if we should sit here and review all this tonight, but we can read it, you know?
Okay.
We will read it.
Hope you do.
We will absolutely, absolutely will. I'm sure it's interesting what you have, what your group, what you're thinking, and we will. But I don't, does council want to listen to everything tonight? You'd rather read for yourself and then ask questions later?
I will read.
Counselor, what do you think?
The public hearing is when?
It's over. Today's last day to put in the written comments.
But that's, but this has been submitted as a public comment?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I guess, is, that's probably more important than this public meeting.
Well, the reason, the reason I was brought here, I wanted to bring it to the attention of the mayor and the city council, is the fact that you guys are responsible for the city as being elected officials, and I want you to know what was in the, in the letter and what was put forth. Again, it's your responsibility for us as citizens to take care of things.
And Don, we appreciate your time and effort. We honestly do. We want to hear everything.
Okay. All right, no problem. It's, the full thing is on greensburgairport.com, so, it's a lot of information. Mary, there's a lot of things here that weren't said at the meeting, and there's a lot of things, you know, I've had many conversations over this, and there are many things in here that I wasn't aware of, till I got this, a copy of this as well, so, there's lots of new stuff in here, and it's all been submitted to them too, so, if you have a question, we'd be glad to answer it if we could, and getting the information's there.
Does anyone have any questions, Don? Don, we do appreciate you bringing this information to us, and I know it's a lot of time and effort involved, and we appreciate your.
Well, it's an issue that's, that's here for all of us, so, in the light of sight.
We're concerned too, we want to do what's right for the people of Greensburg.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else from the audience, council? Hearing that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
New adjourn, thank you.